West Tennessee Bank's mobile banking puts you in control of your finances like never before. With mobile banking, you can complete routine banking transactions in your living room or halfway around the world. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member, FDIC.
All right, so here's the floor on present, so we're going to proceed with the meeting. The first thing we're going to do is change the order again, and we're going to do the selection of the board chair, and then we'll turn that over to Dwight.
Okay, we'll open the floor up for nominations for chairman, board, school system. Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm Nate.
Roger.
Bob Moore.
Second.
All right, we have a nominee and a second. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Roger Moore, say aye. Congratulations there, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. It is an honor to serve with these guys. The next thing I'm going to do is I'm going to take nomination for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I nominate Dwight Booth. Vice chairman. Second.
All right, I have a nomination of Mr. Dwight Booth as vice chairman of second. Any other discussion, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Congratulations, Dwight. All right, gentlemen, thank y'all. We'll go to the next thing, which is our consent agenda is to approve it.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, we have a motion, second approved consent agenda, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that is approved. The next thing on here is going to be delegations. And I am aware of one delegation here to approach your board of that. Chris, would you like to stand up, sir, and go up to the board?
Thank you both for having me. I'm going to be a little long-winded. I don't make these very often anymore, a lot of times because my meetings also are the same taste. But some of the, a lot of it, it's just I want to approach you what you be aware of. Maybe you can put some pressure on school students, teachers, whoever needs to. There's a thing every year, the oral-to-oral contest. They actually pay you to go. It's open to anyone, they say junior high or high school, I look more into eligibility, it's junior high with the high school curriculum or high schools. So basically, anyone 20 years or under some high school, between the ninth and 12th grade. And what it is, they, right now it's to be determined where it's going to be at. We're in the eighth district of the state of Tennessee, as far as American Legion goes. Right now it's to be determined, but the information will be sent out this month. What it is, is they ask for a five to 10-minute speech over, they come up with a little bit more selective curriculum, but it's basically the Constitution, what it means to be free, different amendments. And we haven't had, as far as I know, we haven't had anybody go last year or the year before. Two years ago, there was three people that showed up to the district one. So they all three advanced. One, one of the students, she brought a note card right from the note card, and her speech was two minutes long. She didn't fit the five to eight, or I'm sorry, five to 10-minute criteria. She didn't fit the, you could have notes, but you can't just read from, but she moved on anyway. But it's literally open, and I think they, they have my head for this, but it's literally open to every student, every student from Chester County School and High School could show up to give a five to 10-minute speech, and they freaked out. But it's possible. And the thing is, they paid $25 for you to get there, and if you advance on from there, you're going to go to state, the students, I'm sorry, I say you as general term. And then at state, they'll pay $100 for students to go, for travel expenses. And then, and that's up to, I'm sorry, a portion of $6,000 in scholarships. I mean, that's, I say free money, but it's earned money, so it's really not free. First place in state is $3,000, and in all its base, all expenses, pay trip to Indianapolis, Indiana, in April 15 through to 17. And then if they went from there, they get part of $138,000 scholarship. It's a, you know, I say free money, but it's earned money, you know, and that's, I think it's someone should at least try for instead of going to, unfortunately bringing this student again, someone less qualified who didn't meet the criteria. The next thing I have to say, Boys and Girls State. We've been talking about doing changes, it's been kind of difficult to get some of the people to vote. A lot of them, they don't want to, they think it's going to be more involved. Literally, all I need, you know, we, just like this, we have court. All I need for them to say is, yeah, let's start doing that, which we want to start, we want to be more involved. We don't want to just write a check and say, tell us the names later. We want to sit down with these students, interview them, you know, send who we think is best representing us as well as, you know, you pick from the top 10%, is that right? And then kind of narrow down from there. And with that, there's also, and I don't want this to be part of the students, choosing of the students on your part, but there's also another free, potential $3,000 scholarship for going to Boys and Girls State if you are a descendant of a veteran. And there is, there is given more emphasis on a Korean War veteran because it's Samsung who's giving it away, and they, you know, that's kind of a big deal. We also are going to look at doing, and this year we're doing it, you know, they have senior awards every year. You know, we send juniors to state, they come back, they're seniors, and then they go. The issue has been, we talked to them last several years, and then no one knows what state it is, don't have any idea, you know. And so this year for senior awards, we want to be there, give them their awards. We have certificates, and we also have medals that we hang around our necks, you know, and they can wear that as graduation. You know, it'll, it'll, one, I think, help them be recognized, it'll help us be recognized too. We're really trying to put more stuff right out here in the community. You know, our post has kind of gone dead, and we're trying to build back up. And one of the things though too is, is it'll help the next, the coming students who are going, you know, this year, they can stop and talk to their peers to, so they can figure out what to expect. Lots of things have changed, have come about that. Michael Jordan, he went to state. Bill Clinton went to state, boys state. He was actually voted the least likely to succeed. He invited a lot of those people to Dwight House when he, now I'm thinking, I'm sure of it. But, but you know, a lot of, Neil Armstrong went to boys state. You know, a lot of famous people, and not just famous people, people who are big in their communities.
Yeah.
You went to boys state, all right?
Yes.
It's, it's a, it's a good stepping stone. And so we want to kind of be more part of that. Another thing, something, and you would ask me if I had any questions, and I lied, non purpose, I remembered later, something we've talked about this post is going to do, and I hope others, maybe if we could get a veterans to teach a class today, probably a history class rather than math class. I'm saying that veterans aren't good at math, but you know, history, but you know, we've lived, we've lived history. Who here is veteran? I know there's none. Who here is American Legion members? I'll talk to y'all later. But you know, you know, you've seen history, you've seen, I'm not saying anybody else hasn't. You know, this is the stuff you read in textbooks, Vietnam War, Gulf War, Iraq War. You know, you look through these, these kids are going, oh, well, let me tell you about who were there, this is where I was, this is where. And this isn't something I kind of want to answer now, because, you know, I'm just throwing a curveball, but I'd like for you folks to think about that, something, you know, teach a history class today, and we'll kind of go from there. And then finally, and this is something you may already be aware of, the state adjutant sent us, sent all the post commanders an email, this has nothing to do with American Legion, but American Legion pillars are veterans, defense, youth, and Americanism. And it happened to do with the youth part. There's so many of this, that that's what this is. The state adjutant wanted us to know and to kind of pass it on in case anybody else didn't. There's a Secretary of State, S.A. contest. Kids can get 100, 250, and $500 scholarships, and I think it's some type of savings scholarship thing, along with a mock, I'm sorry, a mock vote election. I don't know if anybody's aware of that or not, but I figure I passed on since it was passed on to me. But that is all I have, most of what I have is just to kind of let you folks know what's, what we're doing, and we're going to be more in your face. Does anybody have any questions for me? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Chris, I was just going to say thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you, I'm, thank you, Corey. We'll be glad to try to work with you in the American Legion, and thank you for your service, and we thank all of our veterans.
Thank you very much, sir. It's board. Thank you, guys.
Is there any other, any other delegations? Anybody that would like to address the board of that? Okay, next we have on here to approve some policy changes, and we had several policies on there. We took those out of the package, hope everyone's had time to look over them. Not really, there are changes that TSBA is recommending because of changes in the law with the, just better written policies. I have a motion to approve those changes.
Motion approved.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion, second approved of policies, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, no, those are approved. The next thing on here is the recommendation for the insurance options. And Corey, I'm going to let you speak to that because I don't definitely quite a bit.
Starting back in the spring, early spring with the legislation, we were learning that the state health insurance committee was lobbying for changes in our health insurance plans. The primary change that affects our school district is that for the limited option, the limited PPO option, the state health insurance committee, because of the fiscal constraints of those costs that went out from those who were claiming that as their option, they had said that the gap supplemental insurance would no longer be lawful. They claimed that the policy or that the plan was never to include from a contribution through the district, that a supplemental plan could be added to any of the plans. Also, the governor's budget included a 6.1% on the average increase of all the premiums and costs. And given those two circumstances, we were considering what options we had, we were hoping that two bills that were going through the state house and the state senate that were to afford LEAs to continue to offer optional supplemental plans would be passed. They never got out of the subcommittees because of the fiscal note that was added to that. It went into summer study, which in a sense, as it's explained to me, froze any chance of continuing gap, and this is for the 2017 calendar year. We are currently on the same plan that we were in January of 2016, and it will continue through the end of this calendar year. But this is talking about effects that go into place starting January 1. So what you have included is options that can be considered for our employees. Remember that with ACA, that it has to be non-discriminatory. That means that both for the classified as well as certified, you have to have a, the same plan for at least one of the options. And at least one of those options has to have, well, it has to be the same plan for all, but at least one of those options has to fall within a price range that is 9.5% of their monthly.
At the national poverty level.
National poverty level. Okay. So with that, what you have here is all the options that are afforded for the employees to consider. And again, if you notice from the plan that will be shared out to our staff, depending on the outcome of this meeting, that these plans represent the same state options that have been afforded to all based on the employee, employee plus child, employee plus spouse or employee and family. The things that are consistent are the partnership promise and no promise, the standard PPO, and then the limited PPO. But then there's also a new option that is more affordable, but offers less benefit, which is the consumer-driven health plan. It's the cheaper option. It's on page, it's on the second page of the spreadsheet. And then there's also what's called open access for all those same plans, that as it was explained to me is more opportunities or options through care providers for the physicians. You pay a little bit more for the premiums cost, but you do have more services with those. Now, what you see on each one of these plans is the breakdown between what the annual cost is, that's talking about annual, including both the district as well as the individual employee. You also see what that monthly premium cost would be, breaking out by 12 months, followed by what our district has committed to pay for each one of those plans. Those options that the district has agreed to put those dollar amounts to, the next line shows you the percentage that the district contribution is. The decision about where those dollars go and the support for those individual plans was reflected in what we have had of our employees this past year. It mimics a lot of the same number of employees who have chosen these specific options before. I do want to make mention, as I said, it was a 6.1% increase as an average, but more specifically, the limited plan, which most of our staff did, that plan went up 23%. That one premium plan went up 23%. However, if you look at, and it's the bottom of the first page of the spreadsheet, we have kept the cost for the employee share the same as it has been. So the district is committing to, and again, as it shows there, 78% of that cost that reflects that for that employee's portion on a limited PPO. Again, now it is limited PPO without the gap as an option, because they removed that option from us. I or Stacy, John sat through some of the meetings, so if you have any questions, what we're asking to recommend is the plan as the three pages reflect. We had a meeting a few weeks ago with, in person with five points who are their insurance broker, and then we had a subsequent meeting, having they provided us numbers by phone. And that's where we talked about what could we add to those contributions for the families or for the employees so they could make a choice next month. Now that we're in September, this month is the month that we're training, providing one-on-one meetings with each employee so they can make the best choice about which plan meets what they financially can afford in their budgets.
Now, we're proving, what, all of these?
All of the, all of the.
The individual will pick out, or play a landlot.
They can pick out, based on these numbers, what they pick out is the highlighted part, the shaded part is what they're committing to, that will be. And again, that payroll will begin December, or January 1 actually.
I have a motion to have a second. We approve these.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, second, any other discussion or questions?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Our employees, they're going to be changing insurance, healthcare. Does all of them take existing problems? Is that, is that the right question?
I think I know where you're going.
Existing.
Existing.
Previous.
Previous.
Yeah. Most of our employees, they're still continuing coverage. This is an option in October, when they can adjust their plans.
Right.
To what they want to. Or if there's, you don't have to wait for October if you have a change, like in the family situation or change in employee.
Right.
But in October, all people get an opportunity to see and hear these options. And again, it's going to be scheduled with a one-on-one meeting, not a room where one person stands up and presents to a hundred.
Okay.
So what I would advise is for people to consider what is their medical needs, what has been their history as of late? Are they needing to have more extensive hospital care or medical care? Or those who just rarely, very rarely go to the doctor? With this, we'll provide a benefits package that they'll look at, because the dollar amounts are telling you one thing as far as how much is going to be impacted by monthly budget. But then you also need to reflect, okay, if I do go to the doctor, what does that mean as far as benefits? Obviously, the less you pay, the more out-of-pocket expenses you're paying.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, approve these plans?
Aye.
Folks, no, we all approve. The next thing is going to be the motion, we approve, we spend $9,800 to use achievement caps on our existing 213 or 20 test results. Any recommendations on that?
Again, this is, the middle school received this same grant money last year. With that grant money, it means, well, the reason why we were able to receive that money is because we have an achievement gap that exists between our general population students and our special need students. Because of that, we could apply for and receive the grant for last year. But because there was no state testing, they extended that grant another year because there's no evidence through the Tennessee or the TEN ready test to justify who made positive gains to get out of that setting. So they extended it one more time. Again, the reason why it's coming for you is that we have, again, these dollars to spend, part of the money will go to paraprofessionals that will be supporting those needs. And again, the effort is to improve the instructional, interventional support so that the students who are at risk can have more opportunities to participate, more opportunities to stay on task, to stay on grade level. And the effort, like what Bob said, is diminish that achievement gap that exists between the general ed students and the special need students. So it's our recommendation that you approve this. We already have the money, and it's just a matter of allowing us to spend.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion, our secretary, we approve this grant, spending the money for that, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, no, that is approved. The next, it looks like we have another Title I program that we have a budget amount that's going to carry over, and I think we're just needing to be able to spend that money, correct?
Yeah, we've got approximately $84,000 carryover from last year, and this is, again, during this time of the year, the federal grants, if they have carryover, this is when we don't know, we don't budget for that money, we just know that there's possibly going to be, but we don't know exactly what the dollar amount is. So with approximately $84,000 being carried over, again, this affects, this is Title I, this is our first year where we're district-wide title. Before, we've been K-5 schools only. Now we are K-12, which allows us to be more flexible with our spending and spread that spending dollar across all the schools in the district. And all of them are taking advantage of these extra dollars with instructional supplies, extra paraprofessionals, teachers' assistants, resources that will help, again, meet the needs of those students that affect by the Title I, which is those who are on the socioeconomic status on the low end, where we are closing those achievement gaps.
Motion approved. Second. We have a motion, second, approve the spending of that carryover money, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next thing is going to be the bleachers at the junior high, we get some bids on that, I'm sure y'all got a chance to look over that. Mr. E, would you like to make any comments on those bids?
We had three, I think we had bid numbers that came in, three manufacturers, reps put in bids, they were winning. Bid was for the Hussey bleachers at $85,055. I looked over the specs, looked through the things that they submitted, went down to Selmer Middle School, they have the same style bleacher they've had for five years, just want to see the quality. I sat down on four years ago, thought they were great, but they looked good, still look the same. The principal, who's been there as long as the bleachers have been there for sure, she said that they've had no problems with them, and they still operate, they were motorized there, and this, they had no problems with the motors or anything, as far as that goes. The next closest bidder was the Inner Cow, that's the kind of company that the high school bleachers are. I think if you add in the cost of removing, it was about $10,000 difference, and I can't find anything that says, you know, there, I need to recommend or look at any further than just to recommend it. The lowest bid is, the best bid that I can find out is to spec and about quality.
Did you have a sample of a bleacher?
I had one from Inner Cow.
Well, is that what it looks like?
Yeah, and I actually checked the bleachers, because they're, one of the things they said was although other peoples will break off and people step on them, saw no broken bleachers, I didn't, slipped my hand under there, and it was as supportive as the one that I had from Inner Cow. And I looked underneath the steel, the frame looked good, I couldn't find anything that said $10,000 more would get us a 10 times better quality of this, I couldn't, I can't overwrite this one. This is one I'd recommend.
Mike, motion approved.
I second.
We have a motion, second, approve the bleachers from the sales and service bid. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, no, it is approved. And can we say that they would probably put them in around Christmas, over the Christmas?
Yes, we're not possibly earlier.
Okay, the next thing on here, it looks like we have a grant that was, was prize been awarded, and Corey, you want to talk about that some more?
Yeah, this is just, was not included in your initial pack, it was added to, but it's then, there's language in your agenda that was handed to you tonight, that last spring, I guess into the summer, we were, we applied for a Perkins Reserve Grant. Perkins is a federal fund that is afforded to for CTE programs. Do you remember, last school year, we started the high school as CPT, Certified Production Technician Classwork or Coursework. We partnered with MSSC, who provided the curriculum and certification, and then we also partnered with TCAD out of Jackson, Jeff Sisk specifically, and received, we were the recipient of some dollars, close to $100,000 with the TCAD out of Jackson to see us get off the ground with this program. What we're doing with the monies now is that we're wanting to take this reserve grant, which was $60,000 total. $10,000 is reserved for certifications, and that does not have to be just for this program that we're wanting to continue to promote, but it can be for any of our CTE programs that has some type of culminating certification, such as for ASC for auto mechanics, or the Certified Nursing Assistant, or Health Science Aid programs. Any of those can tap that $10,000 of grant money. But the $50,000 of it will be used specifically for equipment to be used in partnership with TCAD. partnership with T C A D, um, and this is equipment that's going to be at the high school. You have two bid sheets that were, um, once we had the dollars, which was fifty thousand, um, from a conversation with, uh, Jeff, Jim, or, Dr. Cap was there, John was there, and Mr. Woolley, Keith Woolley, talked about what equipment to get. Uh, John, um, set up this bid sheet, he had two bids to be returned, this Learning Labs Inc. and Relatech had the bid openings, what, last week, end of last week versus first of this week. Anyway, um, of the two bids, the recommendation we make is for that, uh, Learning Labs Inc. for fifty thousand nine sixty. We would add nine hundred sixty dollars out of G P budget to cover that difference between the fifty thousand. We, uh, based on the conversation with John, the, uh, equipment and the support with Learning Labs, he feels like is a better direction to go. This is going to be a significant investment into our advanced manufacturing, is what the cluster is called in the C T E program. Before, we were just doing a separate dual enrollment opportunity code, Certified Production Technician. Now we're working that coursework into our advanced manufacturing. So the recommendation is to accept the bid for the fifty thousand nine sixty with Learning Labs, and to place that order for the equipment.
Mike, motion, approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, go ahead and approve that bid, any other discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks know, that is approved. And, like you have, the next thing on here is for the board approves of adjustments to some of our policies, like two point eight oh five, two point eight oh seven, and two point eight one oh, which is going to allow the financial supervisor, Stacy King, to be able to also, uh, sign checks, without having to use a stamp.
Purchase orders.
Right. And, uh, I did ask if she's going on vacation, she got-
And I'm not signing, she's just-
Purchase orders.
Purchase orders, yeah. But I, I didn't, I didn't-
I might, uh, have a motion-
Second.
Or a second, any other discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks know, and that is approved. Next thing that looks like that we had talked about earlier, and I don't think we remember it, couldn't even kind of date on it, but maybe we'll prove you in September, uh-
Cherry Johnson, no. That goes to put you, stop that before you go any further. I'll talk to him soon.
They don't want to have any kind of dedication, though, but-
No. I mean, Cherry made it real clear, that she wouldn't be there. I said, do you think Brandon would come?
I guess if they, if they won't show up, I don't think we could have a dedication then. Does John feel the same way, he wouldn't show up at all?
Wouldn't show up.
I guess we've got the parking, we've got sign-ups, I guess that's all we could do.
I mean, Mary could go out and take some pictures of the plaque and-
Yeah, I'd be good at that.
You know, you know which plaque you're talking about, Mary?
Yes, the one of the sports plaques.
Looks good.
Jesus. Are you surprised?
No, no.
No, I, I mean, I, I already knew what you were going to say when I covered side in the kitchen to talk to her.
Then here, we get, uh, where we often do the schedule, chapter projects, planning meeting, uh, who is on our planning committee?
Me, I touched that.
I signed, okay, go ahead. Okay, do y'all want to, uh, kind of get together to decide on a meeting for that future, talking about, like, possibly what to do with our department, probably, when we want to do that? Do y'all want to just work that out?
Me and Dr. J, Tom, didn't give control, and Sig what they're scheduled, look like, I've had conversations with the Sea Lees, Mr. Busby, Mr. Busby's got, uh, the state office, I mean, they're scheduled fifteen, it's a Thursday, the fifteenth, I figured right, and then, but, uh, the Sea Lees are just trying to get beyond the hot, hot weather to work a little bit faster.
I was at my house today, we talked about it.
But they're excited about the opportunities.
One thing that, oh, I talked to Troy about, and I haven't talked about, but over there behind, um, the, on our house, property, the roads is, is at those twenty foot, and it's no water well, about two feet of water, and we, we and Troy were talking about what we need to, in the near future, see about getting that filled in, just, and I was thinking maybe contact, uh, Jerry King and see if, maybe two, three dump loads of just sand, I mean, just so we can fill it, I just don't want anybody to follow and us be responsible with it.
I've seen my absence, surface dirt, did we cover it up?
Yeah, and that's what I was, I would want to, that is the fence, I'm sure our maintenance people could tear that down.
We've got a tractor now that can do that.
Okay, and I was going to say-
I would tear it down, but you got ready.
Yeah, we're not-
Yeah, yeah, well, and I believe that, and I believe Troy has too, a workbar, it's sensitive, so anybody can get through it, it's not going to keep me down.
Blood, but it's fantastic.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we were here, talking to Jerry, how kind of, kind of, but that's what I'm trying to keep, avoid somebody from getting in our tree.
Bob, well, we need to tear up anything, concrete or anything like that before we do that, or?
Just, just fill it in at this point.
Just fill it in.
And I don't know, there's an old slide, I think, over there, one of his, you can't really see it from there.
I see that, the slide.
But, but I just saw our maintenance people get probably, I guess, a bolt round, maybe that, or take some, cut it off, we have to, but I just, might get it filled in before it's done.
Cherry, about that. Anybody have anything else? All right, all in favor, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Uh, I would say Edward Jones has installed a ladder, had the press box today.
He has.
Got a picture if you want to see it.
I think it'll bear a little bit over there.
Uh, step ladder.
I do, I saw a bunch of them.
Certainly.
Some was both.
Now, does it just hang down by the-
Yeah, it's attached to the fore end, um, just right there.
Got some nice, uh, better than step ladder.
Mike, motion, which, or, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.